The Court of City Council meeting of October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton. Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Heebick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? So, first item on the agenda, three A is an executive session. The council will now proceed to an executive session for, due to potential litigation, per RCW four-two-thirty-one-one-zero. Should take about twenty minutes. No action will be taken, and we'll let you know when the council is back. Thank you. Boarding on. The city council will be in executive session for an additional ten minutes, so expect them back at six-thirty-two.
Five more minutes in executive session.
All right, call the regular city council session back to order and we are on to item number four, announcements and committee reports. I've got a couple of quick announcements. First of all, thanks to Mr. Young for filling in for me last week, chairing the meeting. And also, the Haunted Forest is this Saturday, the 28th of October. I will say the event is sold out. It's a very popular event, but just be aware that that's going on in Washington Park. And also, R and 30th, the roundabout that I know we're all aware of, you should be seeing, if you're in 300 feet of the roundabout, you'll be getting written notice and the reader boards, the electronic reader boards will be out as well when we start closing that road for the roundabout. So just be aware, detours will likely be on, will be on T Avenue, but not exactly sure which date the contractor's going to need to close the road. So that's all the announcements and committee reports from me. And on to planning committee report.
I'm Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
We had a planning committee meeting just before this at five o'clock. Council members, Moulton, Walters, and myself were there along with the Anacortes Downtown Alliance, Jordan Hay. We were happy to have her there. And we kind of went over a couple different things. I'm going to pull it up right now. We discussed possible code amendments when it comes to the ADU requirements. The state's done some changes in legislation. We still have some questions about how that's really going to function when it goes from one ADU to two ADUs. We've got some questions and staff will kind of do some clarification for us. And then the next thing, we just, we also kind of discussed some of those simple conditional to permitted uses such as duplexes and triplexes and wanting to get that done as quickly and efficiently as possible. That came out of our housing study. Then we talked a little bit about the Gwimus Channel Trail and how much we really would like to see an EIS study put into the 2024 budget. We've done a lot of talking, but that environmental study will allow us to have clarity on how that, what it's supposed to look like and access points and all of those details that are necessary for us to really go and take those next steps to develop it, get grants for it and whatnot. So we're hoping to see that in the 2024 budget. And then finally, we talked a bit about, we had Jordan here. And so she talked a little, gave us an update of the downtown Anacortes Association's update. So they are going to be painting the sign that's, oh, is it 11th Street that goes over the arch there? They're going to sign, repaint the sign, do some updating on colors. The budget for 2024 has about $50,000 to do some electrical work and watering features. So that's an exciting thing. She just wanted to keep us on the loop about. And then also, at 10th and Commercial, they'd come to us a number of months ago about how do you make that more attractive and slow traffic down at 10th and Commercial? They talked about doing some bump outs and what they, what we've kind, what they've come up with when talking to Public Works is that they're just going to do some fun painting at the crosswalks to start. That they're going to do some test trials and then probably do the painting in the spring so it doesn't get ruined by any snow activities that we have. So that was the extent of our meeting. Thanks.
Next up is fiber committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. Back on the 19th, we had a quick fiber meeting. Mr. McDougal and Mr. Walters were there along with myself and staff. It was an update on some of the stuff that we talked about the last council meeting. So when you're looking at making poles ready, so you make them ready. PSE had gone through, given us a cost estimate for the EDA area that we're looking at next. And the estimate came in at close to a million dollars to replace the poles. So that's been an idea that we're no longer moving forward with, working with NOAA net, looking at a redesign and focusing on doing underground work. We're not super concerned that there's going to be a really long delay, potentially approximately two months. The first anticipated build was going to be in January, but now we're looking at mid-February. So, long story short, going underground instead of aerial and avoiding close to a million dollars in costs, but instead still incurring about $250 to $300 instead of fees that needed to be happened, to be done anyway.
Okay. Any other announcements or committee reports?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland.
Thank you. We would, I would like to amend the agenda and push down 7A and create a new 7A that would include an ordinance regarding appointive officers of the city.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath and a second by Mr. Walters. And if you could read the agenda item one more time?
It would be an ordinance regarding appointive officers of the city.
Appointed officers of the city. Okay, any additional discussion for the amendment? This is amend the agenda, not... And I think that's enough to add it to the agenda if I remember my procedures correctly. Okay, so it's on the agenda. Okay, any other announcements or committee reports?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I attended the North Star Project Housing Work Group meeting earlier today at which several jurisdictions presented their options for housing projects on publicly owned property. Items, the parcels that I identified were the one that we have talked about a couple of times on West 5th Street for the Habitat for Humanity project. Also, of course, Sharp's Corner. And then all three of the jurisdictions that were represented there also identified redevelopment of their city hall. of their city hall buildings as an option for new housing. The county identified the Cleveland Street Senior Center in Mount Vernon, which is one and a half acres, and the Fairgrounds, which is 15 acres. But they apparently expect that they would need to replace the senior center and replace the fairgrounds if they pursued either of those options. County has a few additional options. Not all of them are particularly good, but one is in concrete adjacent to SR 20 on some property that the county owns. There are a couple of parking lots that they own downtown Mount Vernon, and those might have some options simply by retaining the parking lot as a parking garage and building on top. And then a few other spaces. All of this is in the context of the 2025 Conference of Plan Update and the fact that we are going to have to plan for housing for all income strata, which we have never really had to do before. And a significant number of housing units over the next 20 years will be distributed amongst the jurisdictions. It will be a challenge, assumedly, to accommodate the market rate housing, but it will be an even larger challenge to accommodate the low-income housing that will have to be built below market rate.
Okay, any other announcements or committee reports? All right, we're on to item number four. This is public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public that wish to address the council anything that is not on our agenda. We have a number of contracts on the agenda that typically we don't take public comment, but certainly we've got this new item as well as the emergency ops plan and the revenue sources that will be taking public comment. Anything else? Okay. Oh, sorry, you're going to come, come up and do public? You want to make a public comment? Okay. Make sure the mic's on.
Okay. My name is Andrea Dahl. I live in Anacortes here on 8th Street. I am here to request an EIS regarding the MJB properties and for different reasons. One is the extensive shoreline development that will take place and also the point, non-point pollution that could happen because of increased traffic on the roads. I think there's, because it's a major development, I think the public needs to know that there is an EIS and what the results are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments? Oh, sorry, I did see that you signed up. Mary LaFleur.
Yes, Mary LaFleur. I have to say that I, you know, I have my ear to the street a lot. And I was a little concerned when I heard there was going to be some shenanigans with the council and our mayor. And this goes to me real close to the heart of balance of power. We do not have a balance of power right now, and I don't care if it's the Republicans or the Democrats, it doesn't matter to me. But when there's no balance of power, that's when this shenanigans happens. And you need to think about that because we have a mayor, he was voted in, that's who it is for this time, and you can't pull shenanigans. And the other thing is that the property taxes, we took a huge hit last year on values going up. It's not just the tax rate. The way you really get taxes out of us is by raising our values. Last year was a huge hit, and now we're getting another huge hit. So hopefully you can stay within the budget and not keep giving us these hits to where you're pricing our property so high that it's not realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I didn't miss anybody. All right, I'm going to move on to item five, which is our consent agenda, items A, B, and C. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, second by Ms. Hubick to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to item six. This is a public hearing. It's a public hearing on revenue sources, including the increase in property tax levy. This is a discussion item and again, open for a public comment. And Mr. Hoagland, I didn't give you enough time to, oh, I did give you enough time to open up your slides.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. So we are having a public hearing tonight on revenue sources. I did want to touch base on a few things, primarily our three largest tax revenues and just give counsel my thoughts on what we're seeing in those revenues. So in the, on the property tax, we have the lid lift that will be coming at us, seeing a little bit of a decreasing trend in sales tax and utility tax. That's a, there's two elements to utility tax. One is overall trending to be, to be flat, but I wanted to go into each of these in a little more detail. On April 25th, the voters approved a .3624 millage increase to the property tax rate. That brings the new rate to 1.34, $335 per thousand. The estimated assessed values at this time are just over 6.2 billion, and that would work out to about an $8.4 million property tax levy. There we go. Sales tax, I want to spend a little bit of time on sales tax. This is no longer our largest revenue stream going into 2024, but still very significant revenue stream and the one that grows at the fastest rate. So in many ways is our most important revenue stream. This chart right here, down at the bottom in purple, shows the receipts over the last several years through September. So the January through September receipts, you can see most years there were increases. Overall, there's about an 8.3% increase in this timeframe that we're looking at. The current year, though, we're looking at a 1.3% decrease at this point compared to the prior year. This is the same data, just in a chart form. So in 2018, the dotted line is the trend line from 2016 through 2023. And this is, again, the first nine months of collection. 2018 was when the bulk of the high school project was done, so there was a big spike in sales tax that year. We knew that was going to be dropping the following year in 2019, so it wasn't really a decrease in sales tax. We knew it was coming, we prepared for it. 2020 was the COVID year, and then sales tax bounced back pretty strongly the following two years, putting us here at 2023. So we're 1.3% below where we were last year. And if you think of that in terms of the 8.3% trend over the last several years, overall effect is over 9% down compared to what we have historically experienced. So I wanted to put that in, in context in terms of the sales tax projection that we've put into the budget for 2024. Another thing, looking at our building permits, we've talked about this. This is through August. Our building permits issued this year are less than half of what we've issued the last three years. And then this is a screen grab, this chart is a screen grab I did off of a webinar last week, and it just shows, the orange line is bank growth, bank loan growth in terms of percentage increase or decrease. And then the black line is GDP, and it just shows how bank, how the GDP follows the bank loan volume. As that volume goes down, the GDP tends to follow. So right now, GDP has bounced up a little bit. The bank loan growth has continued to decrease though, which is why I took a pessimistic view on sales tax next year. So all that to get to this point, the revenue projection that was put into place with sales tax is 10% below what we're projecting to collect this year. So based on historical collections through, actually, I believe this is through August doing the projection. Based on August receipts, historically, what we've collected, we would expect to collect about $6,44,000 for the year. And I took 10% of that for our 2024 projection. Puts us at 5.4 million in sales tax receipts in the 2024 budget. So again, thinking of, if you think of that in terms of that 8% trend that we had been experiencing every year, that 8% increase year over year puts us about 18% below where we would have expected to be during a normal year of sales tax growth. Utility tax? Yep, sales tax. Okay, utility tax made up of two revenue streams. One is the public utility tax that's assessed on our public utilities, water, sewer, storm, solid waste. Private utility tax is assessed on natural gas, electricity, cable, TV, and phone service. So this one, we're seeing, the private utility tax has grown the last couple of years as natural gas and electricity costs have grown. Those costs have turned now, and they're coming back down. So what I'm projecting here for next year is a 5% decrease over what we're projecting to collect this year. And on the public utility side, a 3.5% increase over what we're expecting to collect this year. So overall, about a pretty flat revenue stream. These are the rest of the shared revenues we received from the state, liquor profits, criminal justice, sales tax, motor vehicle fuel tax, down slightly from last year mainly because of the motor vehicle fuel tax. So the motor vehicle fuel tax is not a percentage, but it's a flat amount. So the higher gas cost is, the less we tend to collect as consumption of gas goes down. So that's what I've got prepared. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the thinking behind the revenues that went into the 2024 budget.
Okay, maybe I'll invite any members of the public that want to address the council on the revenue sources. Okay, counsel, questions, comments? Mr. Young?
Question for you, Mr. Hoagland. Given that there are, we expect revenues to be a bit less than what we were anticipating or what normal, normally happens during the cycle. I know we are exploring ways to sort of make up for that or, you know, whether we make up for it or we find areas that we could use less money on. I guess, you know, the thing I'm thinking about, because I know you do, you guys do a great job of that, but my worry is in this process, the more I'm out and about in the community, I'm also hearing that there are other, other agencies, whether it's the hospital, whether it's the port, whether it's the pool, whether it's the other agencies that are looking to increase their amount of revenues. And so therefore, what that means is additional taxes that will come as a whole. How do you think that might impact us, meaning as a city? Because I think sometimes, and I'm just general stuff, I guess my concern is everybody's needing, you know, school systems needing more revenue, they're having to do some cuts. And so I've also heard conversations from the various agencies that they're looking into seeing if they can increase revenues by, you know, changing the rate. And so that's going to be a big deal coming all at once, I think, for the public. So, you know, are we, I'm sure you're thinking about all of that and how we can navigate around all of that, but I just thought that it would be important to bring those things up and just sort of hear you say you're anticipating all of that and that's why you're being conservative in your numbers.
Yeah, exactly. At the end of the day, we, you know, that pie each of us has that is made up of our, of our revenues, there's only so much of that that is discretionary in nature. And that's reflected in the pessimistic sales tax view that I have for next year with some of the indicators that are in the economy right now. Vehicle loans behind schedule, credit card, you know, maximums that are kind of in place now at historical highs. Yeah, it's, it's, it seems like there's not a lot of discretionary spending left, so I, it's hard to, it's hard to predict. It's hard to hang, you know, your, kind of your hat on, on what to expect next year. And I talked about this at the, at the finance committee, talked about this with the mayor as well. So this 10% decrease, there isn't a specific number driving that, but we did do some calculations based on impacts we've seen in the past on the construction segment and what that might look like in terms of real dollars. And we tried to incorporate that into those sales tax projections. But yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's point well taken. There are, you know, limited number of dollars out there in, in the community.
And I said all that just so that we, as a community of people, are cognizant of what's looming ahead for all of these agencies. Because again, everybody's trying to fight for dollars and trying to figure out how do we use those dollars that we have and how do we get more, you know? And so, and I, and I know, I'm confident that, you know, we're doing as best as we can in that, and what I appreciate about the way you view it, it gives us a conservative view such that if we do more than that, then we're better off versus not being prepared for what may come our way. Because I think that we're, as a society, there's still a lot that's out there that we're not clear about what's going to happen financially for any of us. The markets, what it means, all of those is uncertain. And so I just appreciate that, but I wanted to get out that I'm fully expecting those other agencies to begin their announcement of their need for additional funds. And I just wanted to see how that would impact us as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Hoagland? So, but before I let you go, I will say that, you know, my ear's on counsel and I think I probably said it every year, with your heart, one of the hardest jobs of the finance director is try to predict the future. And we always, if you ever watch any financial commercials or anything like that, hey, past performance is no indicator of future performance. But I will tell you that looking at Mr. Hoagland's record of predicting the future, it's pretty phenomenal. I don't know how many years we look back, but you were in, you were well inside, definitely inside of 5%, but I think it was closer to like a 2% predictor. So again, I appreciate that, that challenge and that you, you continue to, to make good predictions even if we don't like them. All right, we are going to move on, and I think I have to close this public hearing. Thank you, Mr.
Yeah, that's exactly. If you can begin this public hearing tonight, then the next meeting, November 6th, we'll go into the specifics of the Public Works budget.
Yeah, I think Public Works operating budget is next on the, on the agenda. But I have to close the hearing on revenue sources though, if I understand?
Yeah, good question. We don't have to have our property tax request into the county until the end of November, so it probably wouldn't hurt to leave it open.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and leave it open because that never hurts, although I don't think we need to make a request based on the levy lift lid. We won't, we won't have that timetable. Because, because of the levy lift lid, we won't, the capacity for the 1% is not, is not available. Is that?
That's, yeah, that's exactly right. So a different process this year compared to most where that 1% is not available. It's just the, the millage that the voters put into place, April 25th is what gets assessed against the, the values that are in place for budget year 2024.
Got it. Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters. Is there still a requirement to send a document to the county describing what that millage rate is?
Yes, yeah, we'll still send in a property tax resolution at the end of the, at the end of the month. I believe I have that on the calendar for November 20th.
Okay, well, we'll leave the public hearing open and we will move on to other business. And we'll move on to item 7A, which is a new amended item, and it's an ordinance amending the appointment of city officers. Ms. Cleland, I think that was your motion?
I do. Yep. And it's being brought to council with Ms. Moulton, Mr. Walters, and myself. And I believe Mr. Walters is going to introduce it.
Mr. Walters.
Thank you. Yes, with the departure of the HR director, we thought that it was important to get in front of front of council an appointive officers ordinance, which is an ordinance that most, maybe not most, but cities typically have for the purpose of articulating who requires confirmation by city council. Existing code, existing Anacortes Municipal Code requires the confirmation of all department heads, but thus it stops and doesn't articulate what is a department, who is a department head. So what this ordinance would do is first of all, list the appointive officers of the city. It would include all the department heads, so administrative services director, city attorney, city clerk, treasurer, finance director, city engineer, fire chief, police chief, hearing examiner, human resources and labor relations director, library director, municipal judge, museum director, director of Parks and Rec, director of planning, community economic development, and director of the Public Works Department. All of those would then, the code would reiterate, would require confirmation by the city council, except for district court judges, which, or municipal judges, which are members of the district court bar. That is an existing relationship that we have with Skagit County. But this provides that if that relationship changes, then appointment of the city's municipal judge would require confirmation as well. Provides that no appointment requiring city council confirmation may begin prior to receiving city council confirmation, which was a problem two mayors ago. No person may serve simultaneously as more than one appointive officer, and no position of, or any position substantially similar to city administrator may be created without amendment of this chapter. This also provides for interim appointments when there is a vacancy. In the event of a vacancy, no person can perform the functions and duties of the appointive officer without an appointment confirmed by city council or an interim appointment, which is allowed under the, under this section. So the mayor would be authorized to make an interim appointment for a period of up to three months without council confirmation. And then after that, the mayor would have to submit either a permanent appointment for council confirmation or submit an interim appointment for a defined term for council confirmation. And no person who has previously served as an appointive officer could be appointed to an interim appointment for the same office. Finally, the city council would be notified, there would be a new requirement for the city council to be notified upon the appointment, interim appointment, separation, or notice of separation of any appointive officer. Vote for city council confirmation on the appointment may not be scheduled less than two weeks after that notification of the appointment, and the city council must be afforded an opportunity to review the appointive officer's employment application and meet informally with the appointive officer prior to the scheduled vote. In some cases, you might not be able to find an employee to fill a position, so this would specifically authorize the mayor to enter into employment contracts or personal services contracts for any appointive officer. However, those would be, as required under our code, subject to prior review and approval by the city council, and no such contract would be valid prior to approval by the city council. The compensation for each employee appointive officer would be that established each year in the annual budget or salary ordinance of the city, which is straight out of the RCW. And all employee appointive officers are subject to the personnel policies adopted by the city council. That's the summary. We wanted to get this in front of council straight away so that we could act on it in the near term.
Okay, so this is the first time I've seen this, and obviously goes to my management, and I have, you know, thirty-plus years of managing both large and small organizations. So I'd certainly like a little bit of time to look at it and provide some feedback, not only with my experience, but also my time on council and dealing with vacancies in both directors and interim assignments. My first blush of this, this is written, these, these points are written by someone who hasn't had a lot of time in leadership and management experience, so I'm a little skeptical of this, this so far, so, but absolutely willing to look at it and also trying to figure out what problem it's trying to solve. Any member want to tell me what problem we're trying to solve with this?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
So this solidifies a lot of the status quo, the way things are already done, but they're just not in code, is my understanding of it. And also, I believe that this is a council ordinance, right? So it's not something that the, that the mayor votes on or really has input on?
Absolutely. You're absolutely correct. I'm the person who has to execute it. I think the interim appointments is probably what I have in the initial heartburn with. But anyway, I'm happy to take a look at it, but any member of the public like to comment on this item?
Connie Miller, Anacortes. I don't have a comment as much as because I don't have any documentation. Is it, is this all now handled by the city council and just not enumerated in a document? Or has it been handled in a different way? I'd like clarification on that, please.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters? As I believe Ms. Moulton pointed out, the objective of the ordinance is to more or less codify the status quo, the procedures upon which we have been operating, but that have some substantial gaps. So for instance, code already says council confirmation is required at department heads, doesn't specifically say in any particular list who qualifies as a department head. This would include the city engineer in that list as well, and the hearing examiner. Hearing examiner doesn't have a, an department, but the hearing examiner is appointed by the mayor and required confirmation by the council under the code section that sets up the hearing examiner, for example. And then the question of interim appointments is a significant one, because if you can have an interim appointment forever, have you really defeated the requirement to get council confirmation of a, of a, a point of officer? So that's the, that's the objective, is to make it very clear where the responsibilities and the obligations lie here, and for us to have an effective confirmation requirement for these officers.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I'd also like to add, as far as council member Walters referenced a couple of mayors ago, we had an appointment that started before, an appointment of a, of a director that started before council confirmation. So some of these things are technical and, I mean, as far as details and cleaning things up, so we all know the direction that we need to go. It's clarifying essentially, for the most part, what we already do. And I think that that's really very important to have in our code, so things don't slip by and we don't get sloppy about things, and things go according to protocol and that that protocol is very clearly laid out.
Okay, so does council want to take, we still don't, we don't have an ordinance number and all that. Hopefully, we get some time to look at it a little longer and bring it back next week if council is good with that, so we can get it on another agenda. Mr. Young?
Thank you. Just quick question, you know, of course, is timing, you got it? My question is really of timing, and I really understand the part that you're saying about cleaning up, just sort of putting in writing a formality of process. I get that. So I was just curious, is it, there a reason, you know, it's brought today? Or there any thought about it? Just, I guess what I'm trying to get to is I totally understand, because it's well-written, but I'm just curious.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters? I, I'd say we have two vacancies.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, so when this came in front of me, and it was, you know, three of the folks spoke about it, it's really about solidifying practices that we have used in the past that have not actually put into code. And as things change and things evolve, we need to have some clarity about how the process should be handled. And as, and this is more of a clarifying and way for moving forward with those important positions. And, and that's, that's why it's come forward now. It's something we probably should have done a few years ago, but it's come to the forefront at this point in time, and we think it's very important that we bring it to council, to have council review it. I think my intent is to have it reviewed, you guys take it home and review it, and then come, bring it back for the, for an, for an agenda item in the future. This is, this is not taking any more control from council away from some other branch of government. It is really just clarifying how those two branches of government interact with one another and how we are informed back and forth when it comes to some really important department heads within our city and, and timely updates. So that's, that's really my intent with being involved in this ordinance.
Okay, so what's your pleasure on getting it back before council? Mr. Walters?
And just as an example, there are contracts on the agenda tonight for city engineer, and this ordinance would allow for city council approval of contracts for city engineer so that we can have those services available, even in the absence of a person, an employee, to fill that position. But this ordinance would not allow for contracts for city engineer that weren't approved by council, that fall below the mayor's contracting authority. So for instance, these, these contracts for forty-five thousand or fifty thousand dollars, whatever they are, exceeding the mayor's contract authority already trigger council review. But if they were lower than the mayor's contract authority with this ordinance, they would also require council review. And that's the type of thing that we want to ensure.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Young?
So I hear you, and I, you know, really understand, and the examples that you're giving, but are, are you saying, are we saying that you want us to act on this tonight? Or are we saying that this is just an introduction?
Yeah, that was, that was my question to council.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Under our rules of procedure, we require two reads on an ordinance. We can waive that requirement with a two-thirds vote of council. I would almost never ask council to pass an ordinance on its first review because, for the reason I wouldn't want to be asked to do that. However, because we've reviewed it tonight, that is its first review. And so we could have the option of adopting it on a second review at our next meeting. No meeting scheduled next week, but there would be one the first, first week of November.
All right, so that sounded like an answer. I'm getting head nods. We'll target, target it for the, the November 6th meeting. All right, any other discussion on that one? Okay. Next up is now seven B, I think, resolution, I think, I think when we amended the agenda to re, renumber everything. Mr. Franciac, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, this is item eight B.
Eight, seven B, right? Now the resolution thirty-one, thirty-four, adoption of City Van Anacortes Emergency Ops Plan? Okay. Seven B. And I know this was before council last week. Chief Harris, you are up, and hopefully we got the right version with some table of contents trouble, and we got that all resolved.
I also hope it's the right version. Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. So since last week, we fixed and made some, a more detailed table of contents, as we were asked, put in the missing headings that were, that were noted. And there actually, there were a few other grammar and typing errors that we also found and fixed. Just to kind of recap, the overall document changes, maps and links have been updated to the most current. The senior center was added as an alternate backup EOC, kind of pending generator services out there. Adjusted the responsibilities to match our current structure, primarily that was the IT falling under administrative services and a few other spots where administrative services were mentioned. And we added procurement responsibilities to, or emergency procurement responsibilities to legal department, and added a pretty long list of laws and reference materials. And that throughout, there were quite a few just cleanup, reordering things, renumbered a few things, but substantially the document remained the same. For the next two-year review cycle, I'm expecting there to be some pretty significant changes in the annexes. The annexes were left pretty much unchanged this time, once we got everything put back the way they were. But we're looking to use some of the things we identified, you know, last April, it needs to be a little more user-friendly, a little bit more, I guess, meat as far as how to instruct our folks out there to deal with emergencies. So as I mentioned last week, each of our section chiefs has been asked to take a look at their, their responsibilities, their divvying up or delegating out tasks, both physical tasks and research tasks, and we should see a much improved annex section, hopefully two years from now. With that, I hope you've had a chance to review the documents. There were, there was a last update today, there were three just letter headings that we had missed. Other than that, it remains unchanged from a couple days ago. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, very much for, for providing what we asked. I have two questions, one is small and one's a little bit larger. On page forty-four of the document, it talks about tribal responsibilities, and the second bullet point says, ensure the safety and welfare of their tribal members, employees, and visitors to the reservation. The, as far as I, the Samish, the Samish Nation doesn't have a reservation, so I would just like that to be corrected to visitors to their properties, and then it applies equally, and it just kind of makes more sense, I think.
Okay, that's an easy change.
Yeah, that's an easy one. And then my other question is about on page forty-one, and so it's the proclamation, municipal proclamation of local emergency, and the city can take necessary measures. And that list grew by quite a lot. So proclaiming, and it includes now proclaiming and enforcing curfews, issuing stay-at-home shelter-in-place orders, and five others. And I'm just curious, was this, were these adopted from other plans or FEMA? Is this best practices? Because it talks about, you know, invoking rationing, price controls, black marketing, and anti-hoarding regulations. That sounds like national war to me. So anyway, if you could fill me in on that, that would be great.
Yeah, as I recall, that came out of FEMA guidance. I'd have to look back into my notes a little bit deeper to, to answer that better, but I think that came out of a FEMA document.
Okay, I'm guessing it does because I, I don't, otherwise, it seems like a lot that we would have suddenly inserted there on our own, but I just was, I just noticed that it's quite a, an extension of the, of the previous list. So, yeah, if you could just follow up with me on that with an email or something, that would be, that would be good.
Okay.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Mr. Walters?
Chief, thank you for providing the redline version in this packet. That was particularly helpful. I, I do think that this should be an evolving document and that there are a number of things that we should follow up on and make changes to, probably none of them worthy of holding back on this version of the document. But for instance, the list that Ms. Moulton points out is, is one that we ought to have more clarity on. It references an RCW, but that RCW doesn't seem to provide that authority. Also, I, I think through COVID and some other situations we've dealt with recently, I thought that we had identified that the mayor's proclamation of emergency then needs to be followed up with a ratification by city council. And I don't think I found that in this document, so I think we should add that in the next iteration. I also agree that the annexes generally, especially the ones with operating procedures or emergencies, are problematic to have in the document, a document that's approved by the legislative body. You want those to be more fluid. And I, I expect that there is some way to deal with that. And would encourage you to seek that out and then bring it back to us in the future. Maybe this is the template. This goes in the document. This is the document that gets reviewed by military department and, and others. But we have an evolved set of operating procedures that live apart from this. I, I don't know, but I definitely take that point and would like, like you to figure out how to deal with that.
Yeah, I think kind of the, the rough plan will be to leave it more as a framework, you know, basic responsibilities in an earthquake or a wildfire, but then take the detail out and get the detail down to the department and section level.
Doesn't seem like there's any other questions, so. Again, we, I think we were well aware that this is a living document. It's a very challenging one to try to, but we, we really wanted to get it in front of council because we put a lot of effort in trying to update our plan. The last time it was before council, I would think was in sixteen, maybe? And so we've been making modifications and changes as, from, from the staff perspective, so. Again, over to council if you want to adopt it as is with those questions and we can work on those or let me know.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution thirty-one, forty-one, adopting the October twenty, twenty-three version of the emergency operations plan as amended by request tonight.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Hubick and a second by Mr. Young to adopt resolution thirty, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-four, adoption of City Vanicordus Emergency Operations Plan with the amendment. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So to clarify, are those the two amendments though that Ms. Moulton pointed out? One, the term reservation and two, identification of the legal authority for some of those emergency powers?
And I'm getting a head nod from Ms. Hubick, so that's a yes. All right, Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
May have lost Mr. Carter. He said he has WhatsApp and Internet challenges earlier.
Motion carries.
Thank you. You know, I was waiting for that one to move on. All right, item seven C now, and we're going to start off the contract show with Mr. Rayum. So the first one is contract award R Avenue Long Term Improvement Project, Street Light Instal, Installation. Mr. Rayum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a contract with Puget Sound Energy to remove the streetlights around Thirtieth and R and replacing them with nine new lights that are moved so that we can build the roundabout. That's all I have for presentation.
All right, questions? Okay, motions.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
These will assumedly, am I correct in assuming that these will be full cutoff lighting, L E D, state-of-the-art stuff?
Yep.
And white or purple?
I was going to go for the ones by Sharp's Corner. I thought everybody liked those.
Make sure that those aren't repurposed.
I'm kidding. We don't like the ones at Sharp's Corner.
Any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, looks good to me. I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Puget Sound Energy as presented.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the R Avenue Long Term Improvement Project, Street Light Installation, twenty-one, twenty-seven, T R N, zero, zero, five. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is item seven D. This is resolution thirty-one, thirty-five, South Fidalgo Water System Transfer. Discussion item with possible action. And there was a kind of a late add with an addendum to some easements and, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Rayum.
Yes, one. So this item, originally the City Vanicordus signed agreement with Skagit County P U D, September first of twenty-twenty-one, for the City Vanicordus to acquire this water area. It's basically Fidalgo Island, unincorporated Fidalgo Island. This is partially my fault that we needed an amendment because we were analyzing their information and there were easements not, there were not easements where there were water lines. In addition, there was no water line underneath the building without, without an easement, both not very good things. So we worked with Skagit P U D one, which was, they were really great to work with. They made this amendment to the original agreement in which they are going to pay for the full cost of acquiring those easements between now and twenty-twenty-four. If it goes over the far fair market values, is that the correct term? That we would then split fifty-fifty any additional costs. But I'm sure these people like to have water that are out in unincorporated counties. So we're not anticipating it to be very expensive to get the easements from them. They probably thought we had an easement to begin with, but regardless, the P U D is going to acquire the easements, so. So we can operate our water system within easements. And that's my presentation of what happened here. And then this will, just so you guys are aware, that we will become, we will acquire the, that area of the Skagit P U D on September, I'm sorry, October twenty-fifth, so in two days, it will become our, a piece of our water system.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Are we able to shut off someone's water if we don't have an easement acquired by the end of twenty-twenty-four, consistent with this amendment?
Yes, we can always shut somebody's water off. We, that's like the nuclear option. We wouldn't typically do that. But we would definitely try to, we would have, we would force the issue with, what's the word I'm looking for, condemnation if we needed to get the easement.
Condemnation seems like a big stick for a, a small objective.
Yeah, there's no way we're going to get there. I, I really don't feel like we're going to get there with getting easements. It's in, it's in a private road that serves most of these houses. So it's not like we're going through their yards or anything like that. It's a, there's other utilities in the road as well.
So there, there was a, a very slight cover memo associated with this item. Can you again describe what, which, why we need all of these easements across all of these parcels?
I think, imagine the pipe going down the road in front of sixteen parcels, and so it cuts across.
And so this is all in one subdivision?
I believe it's in.
Or development?
Two, yeah.
Two, okay. And so Skagit P U D has been operating without the benefit of these easements as well?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, rather than saying it was Mr. Rayum, I appreciate you saying it was your fault that we're bringing this back, but it's your good catch of as we accept this into our system that we accept it correctly with the appropriate easements.
Yeah, we need easements to operate our water system.
Any additional questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Real quickly, is, is the resolution itself an edit of an existing resolution? Or is this basically an edit of, yeah, is thirty-one, thirty-five basically the resolution under consideration? It's not like an update to a previous resolution?
It's an amendment to the previous resolution of September first, twenty-twenty-one, amendment one.
Cool. And I agree, easements are needed to operate the water system. So I move to approve resolution thirty-one, thirty-five as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Young to approve resolution thirty-one, thirty-five. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I'm going to abstain because some of these parcel numbers I'm a co-owner of.
Oh. Make it easy to get the easement then.
Okay. All right, Mr. Franciac, you call for the vote, please.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Abstain.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, item seven E, resolution thirty-one, thirty-six, waiving competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of Endris and Hauser sensor instrumentation for the wastewater treatment plant. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum.
Yeah, so we're asking council to approve, I'm sorry, approve the waiver of the bidding requirements for the purchase of the sensors from Field Instruments and Controls. They are the sole vendor for Enders Hauser control systems. The, the wastewater division, when replacing failed equipment, takes the opportunity to standardize the equipment. And we have standardized to Enders Hauser as our sensors. Just so if you're curious, there, currently we have the need to replace four sensors. There's, of those, there's, well, this is probably way in the weeds, two level transducers and two mass flow sensors ranging from fifteen hundred to six thousand dollars each. And that's all I have.
And this isn't the contract. This is just asking to waive the competitive bidding.
Correct.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Rayum?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move that resolution thirty-one, thirty-six be approved, authorizing the purchase of Endris Plus Hauser sensor instrumentation for use at the wastewater treatment plant and sewage pump stations from Field Instruments and Control, Inc., and waiving the competitive bidding requirement due to a single source of supply.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve resolution thirty-one, thirty-six. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item seven F, contract award city engineer on-call water and wastewater. And it's a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum.
So this is a contract. There's another contract coming next, but this one specifically is for contracting fifty thousand dollars. I think the end date to use that is somewhere in March or February. It's in the packet. For having a licensed professional engineer on-call to be our engineer of record for the city. It's important. H D R was selected because they have a very long and deep history with our wastewater treatment plant as well as our water treatment plant. The, I will be running the contract. There's other, that's not really for water wastewater. I'll save that for the next agenda item. But, um, yeah, that's, that's kind of about it. We, we need to have engineering support items come up that we need to be able to call an engineer, have him review something, especially in an emergency situation. Both consultant firms, including H D R, we have around the clock coverage if I need them. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Rayum?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
This is particularly needed now, given that we've lost our engineer, or we're not lost, but he moved on to bigger things. So that really mine was more of a comment unless there's any other council member with a question. I'm going to move, okay. I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign contract twenty-three dash two ninety-one dash E N G dash zero, zero, one with H D R Engineering, Inc., in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to provide the city engineer on-call for water and wastewater.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Hubick to award the city engineer on-call water and wastewater contract as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick. Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is item seven G, contract award city engineer of record for streets and stormwater. And discussion item with possible action. And I will make a city engineering comment since it's high on the list tonight. And I don't have the math, but since I've been mayor for almost two years, maybe we've had a city engineer for three months. So we've been working with contracts. It just depends on when he passed his P E test, which I can't remember when that was. So we've been using the on-call contract for quite a while previously. Okay, sorry, Mr. Rayum.
You're, you're good. So this contract is with Lochner. Again, this is to have an engineer on record for this time it's streets and stormwater. We split it out because H D R, like I said, has a long history with us for water wastewater. Lochner has a long history with us with stormwater, and they also have expertise in transportation and streets. We've already, have need for this contract as, as I speak now. There's, there was a parks review for the cap-sante improvements as well as people calling and say, hey, I want a new crosswalk, mid-block crosswalk. You really need to have an engineer look at that, a licensed engineer that has transportation background so you can say whether or not that's a good idea or not. All of us can try, but it, it really does help to have a licensed engineer make those calls. So with that, we also had, just if you recall, we do have a contract with Lochner right now to review private development for stormwater requirements. So this is just in addition to that where, again, I will control this on-call and I will use them for situations of, for say, we flood somebody's house or something like that, to have an engineer look at solutions and come up with, with solutions, sorry. So that's about it for me.
Questions on this city engineer of record for streets and stormwater contract?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think this contract is appropriate to make sure that we have somebody available to perform this function. However, there is a lot of discussion and thought right now about, with, especially with respect to traffic engineering. The idea that for quite some time, engineers generally have been prescribing road design, street designs that seek to maximize throughput. Sometimes and frequently, and this is where the criticism is levied, at the expense of safety, at the expense of multimodal connectivity, at the expense of multimodal safety. And potentially other considerations, maybe parking, maybe ambiance, maybe the speed limit that you want to have through a neighborhood. So I imagine that most of the work that's performed under this contract is going to be highly technical in nature. But there is something to be said for the fact that these engineering decisions do really need to be informed by the values of the community, not simply the engineering manuals and the uniform traffic control device manual. And that is, I think, what we get when we have an employee city engineer who works with us every day and is the same person every day. And so I do hope that we continue to work toward that.
We are. It's posted now and we're trying the best we can to hire a regular, full-time employee city engineer.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Motions perhaps?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign contract twenty-three dash two ninety-two dash E N G dash zero, zero, one with H W, H W Lochner in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to provide the city engineer of record for streets and stormwater.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. McDougal to authorize the contract twenty-three, two nine-two, E N G, zero, zero, one. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item seven H, I believe, if I've renumbered this correctly, contract modification, wastewater treatment. wastewater treatment plant outfall, design contract. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum?
Thank you, Mayor. Last one. So this contract does four things. This contract will complete the design, combining the marine and upland designs of the wastewater treatment plant outfall, in addition to addressing the Army Corps of Engineer NOAA comments. That's about sixty grand of this contract amendment. The next part is there you will hire a consultant, subconsultant to design, to full-design the park at the end of U Avenue that we're going to be disturbing by installing the outfall. The third thing, there you will manage the relocation of one resident during a portion of the construction, and that's about fifty thousand dollars. And then the last part, the big part, is the, during a project this size, you really do want the design engineers to be pretty involved during the construction phase, doing requests for information, change orders, review submittals, bid review. And for all four consultants, consulting firms, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it does not include the construction management, which will be another amendment that we will bring forward at a later time. Just so you all are aware, I personally have had some experience with construction projects, and what you usually want to do is have just one contract with the consultant firm that you hire, and so you don't keep coming back and asking you guys for amendment after amendment after amendment. So that will be one of my goals as your public works director, is to try to hit it right the first time through, and so we don't have to keep doing amendments.
It is a challenge that we look forward to you taking on.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
And of course, the mitigating factor on this particular project is the project itself has evolved in a couple of different ways. We're combining the two construction contracts as well. So I think you're certainly excused on that point. I move approval of the contract modification as presented.
Motion by Mr. Walters, second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract modification wastewater treatment plant outfall, twenty, zero, three, two, S E W, zero, zero, seven. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And being no further business, before the council, I will adjourn the meeting of twenty-three October.